Good evening and welcome to all of you to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting for April the 16th. If you will have called order, and I think we need to excuse.
Madam Chairman, make a motion that we excuse Glenn, Commissioner Webb and Commissioner Hammond.
Second.
Thank you, let's vote on that please. Oh, we got to do roll call, okay, so we just do yes. I was trying to do that before roll call. Okay, now we have to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I guess I thought I was doing both at the same time. Okay, we will now have our invocation by Commissioner Smith and our pledge by Commissioner McGlaughlin.
I'll say. Dear Father, we thank you that we're able to come out tonight and talk over the business of thy people. We pray that you will endow us with wisdom and understanding of the issues that we face. Be with each one that's present tonight, give them a safe journey home. We ask all these things in your humble name. And all the people said, amen.
Say what being the pledge please? A pledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll intake a motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, if we'll vote on that please. And our first order of business is the recognition of our Eagle Scouts from Pitt County, and we're always so happy to do that. So we'll go down, and do we need to approve the resolution?
Yes ma'am. Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, let's vote on that please. Mr. Manager, if you will call them up one at a time and read the.
Okay. Tonight we have two local young men who have earned the rank in the Boy Scouts of America, that being an Eagle Scout, and as the Board of Commissioners does about once a month, invites the Eagle Scouts in to present them a certificate and then sends them a letter to recognize this very important milestone and achievement in their final path to the, in the Boy Scouts of America. So if Alexander Campbell Nagy will come up, Alex and his father, anybody else?
Anyone else with you that would like to join you? Guess not over here. You can.
Let me read the certificate. So certificate of appreciation is awarded to Alexander, or Alex Campbell Nagy, Troop 542, for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he worked and renewed the playground at the First Presbyterian Church in Greenville. And the certificate is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners the 16th day of April 2012, signed by our Chairman Beth B. Ward and on behalf of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. Ms. Ward, do you want to present that?
Congratulations, very proud of you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything else?
Okay, just giving you an opportunity, okay?
Okay. Next we have McDaniel Thomas Wynn, he'll come forward. Goes by Daniel.
You all come on up, you want somebody else to take it?
And again, we have another certificate of appreciation that's entitled, is awarded to McDaniel Thomas Wynn, Troop 15. And for his Eagle Scout Award, his project was, he repaired the church bell given in 1877 to the Bethel United Methodist Church in Bethel, North Carolina, so that it will now ring. And again, this is presented on the 16th day of April 2012, signed by our Chairman Beth B. Ward. Ms. Ward?
I was in church there Sunday for Easter, so we were glad to see it and we have heard it ring. Thank you. Anything you'd like to say, Dan?
I'd just like to say thank you to the community.
He did a lot of organization, all of these boys have to come up with a lot of organization, figure out how to raise money to get the project done, and then organize, all your helpers, and you all do a great job, and thank you for what you do to contribute to our community. Congratulations.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, I was gonna just keep that down. Is that it?
Oh, one more thing. Next on the agenda, we have as part of National County Government Month, our flag redesign contest. If our Public Information Officer Kiara Jones will come out and join us. We launched this contest at the suggestion of Commissioner Glenn Webb, who back in the fall had made the, had presented the idea of redesigning the Pitt County flag. We thought it was maybe best incorporate this into National County Government Month that is held this month, the month of April. So for the past probably sixty, ninety days, Kiara's office has been heavily involved in launching this, this contest, and we are tonight going to recognize the first, second and third place winners of our flag redesign contest. We will show on the monitors the, the flags as they were designed, and we're gonna start with third place. If Tuesday Williams will come forward. Maybe she's not here? Okay. For the third place, the individual received $25. Now for second place, if Derek Brown will come forward, and you can see on the monitor here, we have Mr. Brown's suggestion and very good design.
Thank you for participating, we really appreciate that.
The ten stars at the bottom of the word Pitt and County represent the ten municipalities of Pitt County. So we'd like to thank you for your participation and present you that $50 check.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you don't hang around, we want to get a picture at the end.
And for first place, Christina Duncan, if she's here, will come forward please?
Look at the page.
On the monitors, you see Ms. Duncan's award-winning flag redesign for Pitt County Government.
Congratulations, thank you for participating.
Would you like to say anything about your design?
I'm glad that it was chosen, that's what I'd like to say, so.
Well, we're very pleased, thank you for participating, all of you.
So for you?
And if you'll come up, we want to do a whole, let him get that.
We do have a $75 check for the first place?
Thank you, thanks. If y'all could just get a little closer together, please, thank you. Oh man, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, we're okay, just let in, we're alright.
One more, if you wouldn't mind?
What's she charging you for this?
A lot of goodwill.
You got it.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you, those again, we appreciate you participating, thank you, good luck. Proud of them. Okay, next on our agenda, we have the public address to the board, do we have anybody, Mr. Manager?
Yes, Madam Chairman, we have two people signed up at this point, we have Annette, believe it's Mullen or Moline?
Okay, if you'll come right over here to the microphone, can you?
Shout out to the chairman, I'll give you the time at three minutes.
Okay, thank you, three minutes per speaker. And I'm sorry you have to come to the mic, I wish we could take it to you.
Okay.
If you will identify yourself please and tell us, give us your address, where you live, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Annette Mullen, my residence is 307 Oak Grove Avenue here in the city of Greenville, North Carolina. Thank you. First, given honor to God, Council Manager, the Council's Attorney and Councilman. God knows I'd rather be anyplace in the world besides here today. I suffer from a broken rib, torn ligaments, and I hurt. But I figure if I didn't come, no one else would come. On the 22nd of March, I was outside the Pitt County Tax Collector's Office. I met a seventy-two-year-old black lady crying that every dime she had had been garnished by Pitt County Tax Collector's Office. She told me in this way it would take her four months to even get money to buy food. First check would go toward the bank for insufficient fees. Second check would go toward bad checks that were now insufficient funds. The third month would go toward the cost of the non-sufficient funds, and I understood because the same thing happened to me. On the 14th of March of this, of this year, after my vehicle broke down, I swamped my debit card and found out I was, my account had been frozen by Pitt County Tax Collector's Office. The resident I'm speaking of is property that was given to me by a ninety-six-year-old woman before her death. I went in to see a young lady, and please stop me if you don't want me to call names, her name was Jean. I asked her, how can we rectify this problem? You got three choices, give me cash, give me money order, or I freeze your account for fourteen, ten to fourteen days, and we'll transfer the fund from your account to ours. I suffer from major health problems, and I told her, I buy my medicine on the 14th of each month, I didn't have medicine for this, this month. If that's your problem, Smolins, not ours, you knew you owe your taxes, pay them. Okay, I will write you a check, we'll do that, we'll do $520 today, we set up a payment plan for the remainder of the month. How can I give you cash, everything I have is tied up in the bank, that's your problem. She would not take a check from me. Granted, you mean forty years ago, I'm almost sixty years ago, forty years ago, I wrote one bad check in my life, and I cannot understand why now wouldn't they take a check from me? I went home, called my mother in Florida, she sent me $520. On the 15th, I came back, the Tax County Tax Collector's Office gave them the money. Wonder was the young lady that took the money, Jean went home at two o'clock. I told her what happened and how bad I had been treated, not only treated, but talked to like I'm a dog, less than a human being, and I didn't think it was right. She said, well, Ms. Mullen, we sent you a certified letter, if you didn't get it, you need to contact your post office, please allow me.
If you'll take a few, another minute, finish up.
Okay. Kathy called me on this day, Kathy, I'm not sure of her last name, Jean told Kathy to call me. Kathy told me, I have the right to do anything I so desire. The legislature of Raleigh has given me that right. I have the right to garnish your husband's check, I have the right to garnish your paycheck, even though it's due to social security, and I have a right to pull your vehicles and sell it if I so desire. The councilman has given me this right, section, something she quoted to me, has given me this right. Granted, you mean you have the right to collect the taxes, but you don't have the right to humiliate me, you don't have the right to mistreat me, and you don't have a right to make me feel less than a human being. The hearts of discrimination has rolled hard and long in the office, and I'm begging you to put an end to it today. Thank you so very much for your patience, and God bless.
Thank you, and again, I'm sorry that you had to come not feeling well.
That's all right, thank you.
Our second person?
We have Brenda Harris.
Good evening, I'm Brenda Harris, and I reside at 1766 Stokes Elementary School Road, and I've come to tell you that I believe you have a heart to help Pitt County, and I've been quiet these days because I wanted you to hear from people like this that would come in pain to tell you there was a problem at our tax department. I have been shouting for a couple of years, and it's close to being able to put that evidence together. In fact, if you appoint a steering committee, and Scott, I'm gonna give you credit for being a leader, and what I'm asking for is in that leadership and in that good heart that I once knew, I'm asking you to listen to the voice of the people. General statute, one of five, says you can collect. The civil rights says that you have to do it equal and equitable. There's no two ways about it, we have good leaders here. We have an amazingly good team of leaders that I respect, and I don't give that respect easy. I believe that if you put a steering committee together and start listening to who gets garnished and who doesn't, and you start looking at $419 million of present use that's forgiven, do you know what that means? It's $2,700,000 that you're not getting taxes for, and I am a farmer's daughter, I believe in present use, and it started in 2005, it hit very hard in 2006, but now we're present using lots and subdivisions, and we may or may not have beans on them. So if we start looking at what's being done right, you know, Mr. Owens, you're an avid man of, of the law, and I respect that, but if we're doing things using a part of the law and not the whole law, it's kinda like we steal from what righteousness and honesty is. So I've come with a different temperament, I want you to know that. I've not come demanding, I've come saying, Brenda has set still, listen to those people that have come before you, and the answer is a steering committee. Their answer is dignity and tax collection, not targeting old people that have health problems. It is that if a man owns a property that's three or four million dollars, and he's being tax-exempt to about $200,000 because it runs about $850 an acre, then maybe that man needs to bring some money to the table to help our widows and our, our family people. Don't we need an evaluation on who gets taxes? The story I told you long ago, you didn't listen? BHCO owned a property, and still does, in Winterville, it was targeted last year by Ms. Booker. The man in front of me with the same zoning, the same land, the same piece of parcel, he paid $12, $13 a year, I pay seven or eight thousand a year. Something is wrong, folks, when you have management that does not understand civil rights. And I believe that our county manager can lead, and I believe that our county attorney can contribute, but I believe that we need to listen to the voice of the people. Will you do that today? Will you listen and get a steering committee to really listen to the problems in the tax department? It's okay to target me, y'all, I'm a big girl, but let's don't target the elderly and the disabled and the folks that come out of chairs to try to tell you what's going on. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Ms. Mullen, is that correct, Mullen? We have your address down here and your full name, so we will have someone at least look into your, you know, episode of what happened with you, okay? Thank you, Dan. Our next item, our items for report from our manager?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Under items to report, next meeting dates for the month of May, May 7th and 21st, 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on a regular first and third Monday meeting schedule. On April 26th will be the NCACC, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners District Meeting in Barton County, that'll be at the Bob Martin Eastern Agricultural Center, and that begins at 5:30, and dinner is included in that meeting. Item C, April 30th will be the Shepherd Memorial Library Legislative Breakfast at 8:00 a.m. On item D, was a new one before you, has not been reflected in past meetings, your budget workshops will begin May 22nd through the 25th, those will be here in this room at 8:30 in the morning. And then the following week is also reserved for an alternative week of budget workshops, and this may very well be the, this will be the 10th year of my working with the board presenting budget workshops, this may very well be the first year you need a second week of workshops, it's, the situation is that needful, let's put it that way. On May 30th is County Assembly Day in Raleigh, if you do opt to go with the second week of, of budget workshops, I think the 30th is a Wednesday, as I recall, or whatever day of the week it is, we would have to count that day out for those attending the County Assembly Day. Item F, for the remaining events that correspond with National County Government Month, on the 21st, we have a number of things happening, and that is this coming Saturday, we have a community celebration at the Alice Keen Park on County Home Road, that's from 10:00 to 2:00. At the same time, we have a community animal vaccination clinic from 10:00 to 2:00 at Phillip High Church, super shred from 10:00 to 2:00 at Wintergreen Intermediate, a medication drop-off from 10:00 to 2:00 at the District Park. Then the next day, on Sunday, the 22nd, there will be a maternity fair from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Convention Center. The only other item I have, as wanted to mention to the board, you're probably well aware that obviously one-stop voting is, begins, and this will, we have five one-stop voting centers, the Pitt County Ag Center is one on Government Circle, the Alice F. Keen Park, the Communities and Schools Recreation Facility is the second one, County Office Building is the third one, the Winterville Fire Station is the fourth, and then the ECU Menjies Coliseum is the fifth. There are differing times and dates depending upon which one-stop voting center you're needing to vote at, I'd recommend calling my office at 902-2950, we could direct you as to which site applies to you. The May 8th is the day for the primary, for the 2012 primary coming up, but the one-stop voting centers begin April 19th and run through May the 5th.
And at one-stop voting, you can, if you are not registered, you can register at the time you go into your precinct and then vote, but you can't do that on May the 8th?
That is correct. My understanding is, the only time, you can't even go to the Board of Elections at this point to register, the only time you can do it is at the one-stop early voting, and you cannot do it on the 8th, like you said.
And the, these places, these sites are on the screen right now, and I'm sure that our communications center will probably keep putting that up often during this time.
Yes, we'll make sure they do that.
Mr. James, did you have something?
Yes, I do, on the animals vaccination, is that for rabies?
Yes, sir.
Why all you just having one that, most of your dogs you're gonna find in rural areas to begin with? Why don't have them, and why can't we have more than one?
We've had a series of sites where we've done these, I believe this is the next site in the rotation, that we've had.
We've done them in different places.
We actually did the Little Willie Center, we've got Phillip High Church, then we'll have the Boys and Girls Club north of the river. This is vaccinations funded with a grant, plus we've done two out at the animal shelter this year in conjunction with other events, but these, we had one in April, one in May, I mean, March, April and May, that are all part of a grant funding we got, it's actually distemper and rabies, for cats and dogs.
So we have three more opportunities after this one.
Is that free?
Yes, sir, it's all free, it's paid for by an ASPCA grant.
Well, I would suggest that if you could have them at the high schools, that's kind of a century, it's a good way to notify the people because you do have dogs that they're not vaccinated.
We, in a four-hour period at, at the Little Willie Center three weeks ago, we did almost 300 animals.
I know.
It was, it was incredibly busy the whole time we were there.
You would have it anywhere, in rural areas, they just got, well, you just find dogs that run loose, here in Greenville in your towns, they've got a lease law, so therefore they don't have many. But how long each vaccination, is that for five years?
Just depends on the age of the animal, sometimes it's a one year and sometimes it's a three year.
So three years is the longest?
Yes, sir.
Because of these fox and raccoons and things like that, spreading that rabies, they need to be vaccinated, especially for our kids, young people.
Alright, thank you.
Well, I want to thank you, I think it's very good that we do that, but I think we, it doesn't cost very much, it would be good not to have one, but to have two pick houses would be accounted.
Yeah, there, there are several we're offering under this grant.
Yes, Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Just one, one major point, I think, that we need to emphasize as far as that voting is concerned, you know, now one can vote at age seventeen, providing that they turn eighteen by May 8th. That can be, you can, you can certainly vote, so that, that needs to be, that's crucial, because there's a lot of seventeen-year-olds out there that can vote, providing that they turn eighteen by May, or before May 8th.
Right, exactly, thank you, all that's good information. Okay, we are now ready for our report from Pitt County Schools, quarterly report, I think, from Dr. Beverly Emery, if you'll come forward? She's brought some power with her tonight.
Good evening. I did, I did, good evening, hope you all are all doing well.
Yes, thank you.
Smile now, it's Monday evening, Mr. James was talking, I have to tell you this, I was harkening back to years ago, a superintendent in a small district in Ohio, and we had a wild turkey that kept going after kids when they were walking to school, and we had some good farmers who could come take care of the wild turkey, but any mention of that, and then we had PETA show up, and that was quite a trick, I'll tell you sometime when it's not in public how we, how we took care of the wild turkey, so you do, you don't know where those animals are going to come.
So you enjoyed Thanksgiving that year, right?
No.
David Solomon can tell you how to take care of them.
That's right. Thank you all for this opportunity, we've enjoyed the last few years coming quarterly and, and talking with you and answering any questions you have. We feel like it's helped to build a spirit of collaboration, and that's the spirit in which we are here tonight. We first want to say that we appreciate the opportunity afforded by the county manager to come and appeal the give-backs this spring, and we opted not to do that because we understand the difficult position you're in, and we know that that's not over, as Mr. Elliott mentioned earlier. So what I asked Michael to do tonight with our few minutes is just to, and, and I know that you're aware of low wealth funding, but our board asks us just to be sure that we remind you of the connection between that $6 million in low wealth funding that we receive each year, and its connection to our local funding. And so I've asked Michael just to share a few points with you, and we will answer questions about that, or anything that you would like to ask us questions about, but we thought before we get into budget season, it would be an opportunity for us to just share some of our concerns with you, and then both Michael and I make the plea that as we look at whatever the necessary challenges may be, that we try to be as creative as possible with how we do that, because we have multiple kinds of funds, and some of those funds affect our low wealth funding and some of them don't. So as we look at how to navigate a very difficult budget season, that we continue to partner and, and be creative. I do want to just also publicly say to you folks and to anybody who's watching, when things go bad in the district, oftentimes the superintendent is the person who wears the target on their back. When things go good, it's nice every now and then to get some credit, but I don't ever want to miss an opportunity to say that our ability to navigate the last four years of pretty challenging financial times has been because of the genius of Michael Cowan, and he's really awesome. He came to the district as a CPA, but we've taught him all about being an educator, and so now he's one of the first people to really say we've got to protect the classroom, and I'm proud of him for that and the great job that he's done in helping us manage the resources of this community, so, Michael?
Good evening. I certainly hope it's not downhill from here after that, that comment. Each one of you have received a low wealth allotment handout. The first page is an overall summary of the low wealth allocation, while the pages, corresponding pages provide an in-depth detail of the state allotment policy, and if you have trouble sleeping tonight, you can take us home, and I'm sure it would do the trick on the backside, it's some pretty heavy stuff. But I want to just give just a very high overview of what state low wealth funding is for Pitt County Schools. And in a nutshell, it's funding that we receive through the state of North Carolina, through the state public school fund, due to our designation as a low wealth county. What I'll do is I'm gonna walk through each one of these letters step by step. A, low wealth funding. A, "Low wealth funding provides supplemental funding to counties that have been identified as not having the ability to generate revenue to support public schools at the state average level." Pitt County Schools has been designated as a low wealth county per this calculation for well over a decade. It's probably more like 10 to 15 years that we've actually received state low wealth funding through this formula. In fact, this year's allocation from the state for low wealth funding was, well, over $6 million, $6,890,000 to be exact. And Pitt County Schools, probably unlike other school systems that receive low wealth, use it solely to fund instructional teaching positions. This year, over 145 teaching positions, as it has been in the past years for over the last decade that we've had low wealth, used to fund teacher positions in areas such as regular instruction, career and technical education, exceptional children's programs, academically gifted, and English as a second language, again, going directly back into the classroom. There are three requirements that must be met to receive state low wealth funding, and it really gets complicated, but I've tried to summarize it the best I can right here. The first is the wealth percentage requirement. Counties must have a calculated wealth percentage of less than 100%. Wealth percentage is actually based on the county's total tax revenue, tax base per square mile, and average per capita income. A long drawn-out calculation uses this information to basically spit out what Pitt County's wealth percentage is. If it's less than 100%, we're eligible for funding, if we meet the criteria, other criteria that I'm going to speak on in a second here. Our low wealth percentage for this current fiscal year is 84.88%, well below that of 100% that is required in order to receive or be eligible to receive funding. Overall, over the last 10 years, we've been able to receive low wealth funding, and again, 10, 15 years, however far back this allocation's been provided by the state, our wealth percentage has ranged anywhere from 84% to 86%. So we're in good standing there. As I've told Dr. Emery many times, there, I don't have a concern with that wealth percentage exceeding 100% in any one given year. The second requirement is the minimum effort requirement, which basically says the county's effective tax rate must be greater than the state's average effective tax rate, per this calculation. Again, per the state's low wealth calculation, Pitt County's effective tax rate stood at 65.5 for this year, whereas the state's average effective tax rate stood at 55.8. So again, you can see that our Pitt County's effective tax rate higher than the state average, no concern there. However, there is kind of concern in my stomach as I think about the third requirement, which is called the supplement requirement. Basically, this says, "Low wealth funding must supplement county funding for education. Low wealth funding cannot replace county funding for education." The low wealth formula requires counties to maintain a calculated level of funding, local funding, to school systems in order for us to receive low wealth funding. Reductions in county funding for education negatively impact this requirement. Well, that's a lot of words. So what does that mean? With concerns to Pitt County Schools, a significant reduction in county funding for education could put Pitt County Schools in violation of this requirement. If we are found to be in violation of this requirement, Pitt County Schools would ultimately lose the $6 million worth of funding that we receive from the state that's being used to fund instructional positions within our classrooms. So what am I trying to say? Ultimately, we know that you guys have a very large challenge in front of you for this next fiscal year. It's a challenge that we faced over the last several years, and this year, this next fiscal year, we're looking at reductions in state funding continuing. We're going to have to send back an additional $1.2 million to the state. We are preparing for the possibility of reductions in local funding, in local county appropriations. We are not here to advocate to you tonight to not reduce our funding. That goes without saying. That's what we would like, but we're not here to advocate for that. We're here to give general information of how the low wealth funding is tied to our county appropriations. And I tried to summarize this in one statement, and that is at the bottom of this summary, letter F, that basically says, "In cooperation, Pitt County Schools ask that we work with Pitt County Government to consider any and all options available to deal with reductions in county funding for education that will minimize the impact on the low wealth formula." That's my focus, and that's Dr. Emery's focus, is to minimize the impact on that. We receive allocation for local appropriations from the county for operations. We receive county appropriations that funds capital. There's all kinds of ways that we can work with county manager and staff to come to some kind of solution that would balance your budget and help minimize the impact that it would have on our low wealth formula. I've tried to run the numbers in the calculation that the state provides, and it keeps coming back to somewhere around $1 million. Is the reduction in county appropriations that are currently dedicated to operations that we could sustain, where anything greater than that, we would be in some kind of jeopardy, some kind of danger zone with concerns to our low wealth funding. I'm just laying that out on the table. Our goal here is to work with you guys over the next couple of months to see what solutions that are out there that we can attempt to minimize the impact on our operations. Because if you're looking at reductions in state funding for Pitt County Schools next year, 1.2 million, okay, 1.2 million. If we're looking at a reduction in county appropriations anywhere between $1 million, 1.6 million, I just throw that out. That's another million, 1.6 million. But as hard as that is to comprehend, I really can't comprehend a reduction of $6 million on top of that in low wealth funding that has been a staple for Pitt County Schools and has put a lot of instructional resources back within our classrooms that, again, have been used to fund career and technical education positions well above the state formula, academically gifted positions above the state formula, have been a real influence on our schools and being able to meet our overall objectives as a school system. So that is my quick overview of the low wealth formula, and I'll turn it back over to Dr.
Before we leave, could you stand, since we've been taken to school on this? I really didn't know a lot of this, and I meant that as a compliment when I said that. Is anybody that would like to ask a question?
I have some questions.
A question.
A question.
Yes. No, go ahead, Mr. James.
The first thing I want to say is, it's very misleading, and I've told our manager this several times. He's got our tax rate at 65.50. That is not true. We've got a point, see, you've got the Greenville. We've got a EMS countywide, 4.1.
4.4.
That's the tax, and it goes on every taxpayer that's living there. Most of your five districts, again, going to be countywide, just about, it's about 5.4 cents. And this is the thing we met with these people from Raleigh, when I told them this, they didn't say anything more, if you took notice. They did when we were there. But instead of the 65, it's very misleading. All right, but the next thing, that what about these port counties, counties like Edgewood County, Martin County? They don't have the money, and they are not putting it into education. Is the state going to do away with their low wealth because of that? That's my concern.
Well, there's a couple of allotments that the state provides, counties as such. There's the low wealth allocation, and again, I don't work in Edgewood County, but I would imagine they are a recipient of low wealth dollars.
Oh, yes.
I can't speak for how they utilize their low wealth funding. Now, the last time we looked at this, a couple of years ago, we did, we did find that school systems across the state that did receive low wealth funding were using low wealth to fund central office salaries, to fund clerical and custodial salaries, positions that, in good conscience, we feel that can't be done. We are dedicated, and always have been, since I've been here and as long as I am here, committed to putting 100% of those dollars back into the classroom. Edgewood, I can't speak for how they do that, but I'm sure they're receiving low wealth. They also are probably eligible for small county funding as well. That's an additional allocation from the state to help small rural counties provide additional allocations for instructional programs.
So you're saying we get 145 teachers, and that is above the state requirements?
Exactly.
And those teachers can be used for gifted or handicapped and...
Yes, we use the majority of...
And so forth.
We use the vast majority of them to fund additional regular instructional positions, as well as EC positions. But for this fiscal year, I believe we had 10 and 1/2 positions that were being used for academically gifted. We had an additional seven positions that were being used for career and technical education, and that's on top of the local appropriation of over $150,000 that we have for career and technical education, plus an additional three positions for limited English.
All right, the money that we, the stimulus money, we'll get it one more year, is that correct?
Actually, the stimulus dollars are gone after this fiscal year. Now, the federal year runs on a different timetable. Actually, the deadline is September 30th of 2012 is when those dollars will expire.
September 12th.
Which will be the first quarter of our fiscal year, June 1st.
Is that money used, of course, we hire teachers and so forth with that, but that funds would count as far as the low wealth?
That...
How does that figure in on your low wealth?
That fund, that funding can only be used to support school-based staff. It cannot be used to support any overhead staff, any central services staff. It can only be used to support central, no, school-based staff. That is completely separate from the low wealth funding. It does not go into the calculation.
All right. Have you got it broke down as to say a Pitt County was going to cut money from the Board of Education? Have you got it broke down as to what, what's that?
Which areas we would come from?
Yeah, and what...
Yeah, we've started our budget planning process, and we've had conversations with our school administrators. The unknown to moving forward with that plan is that we do not know what to expect at this point in time, first of all, from the county, but at the same time of managing projected county reductions, we're also having to manage projected state budget reductions as well. We already know that the second year of the state's continuation budget includes an additional $1.2 million worth of cuts to Pitt County Schools. We do not know what the additional cuts may occur when they come back into the short session. It's a, but we're moving forward with an overall plan.
So you don't have any idea as far as what Raleigh is going to do pertaining to that yet?
No, I do not.
That's all the questions. I appreciate you letting me ask more than one.
Okay, you're welcome, Mr. James. Anybody else have a question or a comment? Mr. Owens?
Only a comment. I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that what they are saying is that they do not need funding from the county as they have in the past, but they want to try to impress upon this board that do not go beyond the level that would permit us to get the $6 million from Raleigh.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I...
And that's the bottom line, and we appreciate that, because we're all trying to get ourselves better educated. I think that we've been in, well, individually and as a group, relative to the things that we're going to have to look at. That's why we had that budget session, informational session about six months ago. And this is just, to me, is an addition to that. Let's hear from Mr. McLaughlin and then Mr. Smith.
I want to thank you for that great information. It was very good information. I did not know about the low wealth, and it was very interesting to hear this, but in terms of having this going on for 10 to 15 years, it certainly was good to note that this money's coming.
Yeah, it's an item that I've talked at great lengths with the Board, our Board of Education over the last several years. I started to bring my overall calculation of the low wealth formula here tonight, but I thought I might wear out my welcome pretty quick, because it's about, from here to the ground, about that tall. But yes, it's, we have received low wealth funding for the last 10, 15 years due to our low wealth standing, and it's been very influential in our ability to put instructional resources back into the classroom.
Now, you said also that this low wealth has provided you to hire teachers?
Solely.
Now, I would think that this has to be an equitable balance type of situation. And this, how many teachers have you hired within this past, say, five years?
Oh, my gracious. Well, consistently, we've been able to fund at a minimum 100 positions from low wealth over the last probably eight, nine years. And that fluctuates with the level of low wealth. And again, I'm not trying, I don't mean to bring the sob story to you, but I already know that our low wealth funding for next year is going to reduce by $600,000.
Right.
And so for that $6 million is going to reduce to 5.4, so it's up and down based off of the status of the state budget.
Let me tell you where I'm going with this. You know, I'm thinking about the unitary status that we are so much involved in now, and we well know that we have to, you know, deal with this facing us, so we have to really deal with that issue. I'm concerned, and maybe you could tell me, I'm not, I mean, if you could tell me, then I'm not concerned. How has that balance been with the minority teachers versus the non-minority teachers, and how has that been in terms of being implemented? That's what I want.
There's no way I can answer the race issue there, because we don't hire people with these dollars and quantify them that way. I mean, we look at our staff overall. What I can tell you in terms of our quest for unitary status is the fact that we can show we have used this money to add teachers in schools, particularly high poverty and low-performing schools, bodes well for us, that class sizes are lower because of these positions, that we've been able, for example, to increase, one of the, one of our goals in the last few years has been to increase the number of diverse students in our gifted and talented program, and we've seen tremendous increases in students identified and served. But we also are funding 10-plus teaching positions so that we can serve more kids in those programs. So I can't tell you, based on this 145 positions, what's the racial makeup of that, Mr. McLaughlin, but what I can tell you is, we're employing 145 teachers more than we would be if we didn't have this, and that's providing direct services to kids, particularly in some of our low-performing and high-poverty schools that we wouldn't have.
And that's great, but you know, when you deal with federal money, grant money, I would think that that would have to come in place, so that was my point. Thank you very much.
And just to make a point with the unitary status, the two things that you mentioned are two of the things that were part of the report, the fact that you are able to reduce your class sizes in the schools that have shown low performance on testing, is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And that you've been able to put additional personnel into schools that are considered low-poverty schools?
Yes, ma'am.
So this does contribute to the plan to reach unitary status.
Absolutely.
That was kind of what, okay, Mr. Smith?
Does the low wealth funding depend on all three criteria that you outlined, or...
Yes, sir, it does. All three criteria have to work together to receive the 100% of the funding. If you, if you, if you meet one criteria, then you can bomb out on the second or third criteria that would impact your funding.
Yeah. Does the amount of funding vary from year to year?
Yes, it does. And in my simple mind, I've tried to justify that to myself in that as our wealth percentage increases, it means we would, are a less, a less unwealthy county, and someone else's wealth percentage might reduce, which means they are a more poor county. So our allocation can change from one year to the next just based off the calculation that's been done.
Does all schools, can they benefit from low wealth funding?
Oh, my gracious, yes. Matter of fact, in the allotment process, we provide to each school the number of positions that they would be allocated based on the straight allocation formula, and how many positions they're supplemented above the state formula with the use of low wealth funding. So every school does benefit.
Does it depend upon any other free or reduced lunches to start? Used to be a provision in it for that.
Well, there's, in the formula, maybe many years back, it may have, the state uses the per capita income of the residents of Pitt County in order to do the calculation.
Thank you, Matt and Charlie. Thank you.
The other point, and you touched on it a little bit there, both of you, that I wanted to make, is that one of the ways that we help our K-8 schools is through these, through these positions. You all recall that in some of the smaller K-8s, sometimes it's hard to run a middle school program. You may only have one teacher that teaches math for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so sometimes when we do our allotments, we're not able to offer the full curriculum in those schools, because we, if we just followed the formula, there would not be enough staff there. And this is another place that we're able to help those schools and provide more equitable programming, because we have a little bit of leeway with the positions.
Okay. Mr. Garris?
I too wanted to thank you for coming and giving us this...
Uh, I too wanted to thank you for coming and giving us this information. It is, uh, a good piece of information for us to have as we work through this budget process. Uh, I think more of that kind of information we can have up front, the better off we're going to be. Now, if I understand correctly, because you were very frank and very candid in your numbers, and I appreciate that, we allocate around 33, 34 million to you, and I believe you said that we could not reduce that any more than 1.2 million to lose this status?
When you're, and I, when I speak of appropriations, I'm talking about operating appropriations.
Okay.
And the number that, that I've been keeping in the back of my head with concerns to operations, again, appropriations for operations, somewhere around $1 million, that we would be in a, in a danger zone.
Okay.
Because that, that range could go above a million or less than a million-
Right.
-depending on the actual calculation of low wealth allocations from the state. But that's the area that I start to get a little bit uneasy.
Well, that, again, that's a good piece of information for us to have because we surely need to be very careful about what we do because we don't want you to lose the 5.6 million. That would, uh, really multiply the, the challenge. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Owens?
I only want to respond, uh, you know, this, uh, low wealth is not a new phenomenon. It's been going on 10, 15 years. And Melvin, uh, you know this from the downflow from the state, as I recall several years ago, it was money to try to approach the concept of unitary, and it was not a diminishing of it, but to advance it. And that's one of the merits of having this low wealth so that those things could be done. That's what y'all been trying to do. Thank you.
Exactly. And I want to make one comment, and then the manager. Um, the, lower comment, probably a question. We have not lowered our contribution to the county schools in years. We haven't met what was asked for, you know, every year, and you all have been very responsive and very helpful, and we really want you to know how much we appreciate that. And this information is good information, just like everyone has said. If whatever were to happen with the red words on this page, the formula or whatever, it doesn't mean, if it went down, it doesn't mean you would lose the whole 6 million, does it? Or does it graduate?
Well, I think that's why I'm, it's important that we start to talk about this because-
Yes.
-that's where we want to keep all options open as to how we handle any, if we have to have any budget reductions. I'm still keeping, my fingers crossed, but if we have to have any level of budget reductions, that we look at all the options-
Right.
-between both boards-
Exactly, sure.
-of how we handle that.
Exactly. So, but it doesn't mean if it were to happen that you would lose the full 6.
It just, it would just depend on what the level of reduction is.
Oh, yeah, but it would have to be pretty big, I would think.
Yes.
Anyway, that was just kind of, I wanted that kind of in my head when I go home and study this tonight, when I get ready to go to sleep.
Jeff, can I thank them for one thing?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you all for at least lowering that units credit from 28 to what is it now, that, uh, so that we won't have so many dropouts?
21 if students turn 19, so we're still working on the lowering it overall, but a student who turns 19-
Well, one of you got to do, when the state of North Carolina, you only have to have, I have been on this for years. If they want to take 28, let the smart, let them do it. But these kids that are on, and over half of them, need to get out and they're going to work, so why make them have 28 units when the state of North Carolina only requires 21 or 22? That, you're taking up space, you're taking up millions of dollars that you don't have to spend to take and to keep them in school, and they don't want to be there. And I had even thought about putting a stipulation, if you go, if you don't go there, we're going to cut your money back. No, and it could be done, but, uh, I think I want to thank you for what you have done there, and, um-
Beginning steps.
You began it, but I, I, I mean, that needs to be done. There's no need to, because if they want to take 28, they can do it, but then they can go to work if they do what the state requires them, and I've never known, I don't know any other counties does that, in North Carolina, but Pitt County. I'm being honest with you.
The superintendent said they were working on that. It's a slow-moving process.
Yeah, but I've been talking about this about three or four years.
Oh, I know that.
But I thank you for what you've done.
And that was kind of what I was saying.
Madam Chair.
Um, yes, sir, Mr. McLaughlin.
Just before you leave, Superintendent Emery, uh, if you could speak just briefly, because I'm getting a lot of calls on this unitary status, speak briefly on that. Where, where, where are we standing on that?
We are, as you know, Judge Howard ordered, when, when we went back into court in 2009 to ask, uh, the courts to merge the two orders, we had a Greenville City order and a Pitt County order. We were also following orders that had 70/30 ratio. And in fact, when those ratios were written into those orders, that was a 70% Caucasian, 30% African-American ratio, which over time, people had said it's a 70/30 African-American/Caucasian. And because there was case law, um, to support for districts that were not under court order, that the use of race in student assignment was not legitimate or legal, um, what, what the board did in '05 was challenged, and that's what got us back into court. So when we went into, uh, 2009, we asked the courts to do two things. We asked the courts to merge those two orders into one, and then to adopt the language of our new policy, which took the racial ratios out of the process, and said we would look at a variety of factors to look at diversity in our schools. We would look at race, we would look at socioeconomics, we would look at student achievement. And the courts blessed that policy and said that was a legitimate and legal barometer to use in assigning students to schools. What we didn't ask for, and Judge Howard gave us, was also a mandate to be back in front of him by December of 2012 with a plan for achieving unitary status, meaning getting out from under 50-year-old, uh, court orders. And so we have been working to collect all the data that the courts want to see, uh, to put, uh, together, the strategies that we've tried to use to address some of those areas where we know we have weaknesses. And so, uh, going forward, uh, what the board will have to decide is what does that plan look like? Um, what, at what time? Do we want to present it before that deadline? Do we wait until December? Um, what we're doing right now, and probably why you're hearing so much, is that we have had a series of public meetings where we've invited anybody who wants to come, um, to come share with us, uh, not so much, because it's so complex, we're not really asking people, how do you think we should achieve unitary status? That's hard to do in a public meeting. But we're asking them about their concerns. Um, what are the things that concern them? Are there inequities that they're concerned about? And then do they have suggestions for ways we might better engage parents, students, families, um, in the process? Um, you know, people ask me, are we unitary? Um, I don't make that decision. The courts are going to make that decision, but we were directed by the judge to present a plan to get the district towards unitary. So, you know, we have to take a position that over these past 50 years, um, we don't run a dual system anymore. We don't run two bus systems. We don't have two, uh, sets of facilities for folks. Do we have areas where we have gaps? Absolutely, we do. And so it will be interesting to see how the courts look at those. You know, do they tell us we're unitary, or do they say, you've got some more work to do, here's the things that you need to go work on? And, and both of those are fine. Um, if in fact the court said to us, we think you need to work on these three things, that would be great for me. I would have a prescription then. Right now, I'm dealing with, you know, seven green factors, um, and case law to sort of guide what we take, take to court in December.
How has the public engagement in those sessions been?
The first, uh, two were rather small, uh, turnouts. The one we had before spring break at Rose, we had a fairly, I'd say maybe 20 people. So not huge crowds by any means, um, and we've advertised all over. But generally, what you find is unless something affects somebody personally, you know, they're not going to take an evening away from everything else they have going on to, to come.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Okay, um, the manager had asked to say something relative to the state low wealth allotment.
Just one more question, Michael, Dr. Emery. On the low, low wealth funding allotment, I think Chairman Ward asked a question, just want to ask one more time. If we go above the benchmark that you identified that cuts could be made, will they cut the low wealth funding incrementally, bit by bit, or do they cut it out altogether?
Now, if you are in violation of the, the supplement requirement, it would call for the complete, uh, loss of your low wealth, uh, allocation. Now, you might be able to come back the next year and become eligible, but you would not receive it until you made up the shortfall from the prior year. So every year, it would compound itself.
Okay.
So if you were, and I wanted to answer your question, if you were $300,000 short of meeting the requirement in, in year one, in year two, you became eligible again, you couldn't make that up until you received an additional $300,000 in funding to make up the prior year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to reiterate, I know you ask good questions, and all of you have this, but, um, I want to go a little step further than Michael and say, you know, we get capital funding, we pay rent, uh, we have other revenue streams that we work with besides operational dollars, and that's where we really hope we can work with you so that you can achieve your goals and we don't compromise this $6 million from the state.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, okay, our next report is from Kathy Booker, our tax collector.
Um, on your tax collection report in your packet, the March 2012 combined tax collection rate of 95.37 is slightly below the March 2011, uh, rate of 95.43, but exceeds the 2010 rate of 95.04. Tax administration consent, continues to pursue, pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary enforcement remedies available from, through the North Carolina General Statutes. And I did want to, um, let you know that they do follow those. They're the most important thing to us, to make sure we are statutorily correct. Um, the staff works very hard for you, um, to follow. We, um, if we have a question, we have available to us the North Carolina Department of Revenue, the Adlorm Tax Division, who's very familiar with our office and our operations, and also we have available the, um, Institute of Government at Chapel Hill, if we ever have any questions about our collection procedures. They, both organizations have always been more than helpful to us, um, if we do have any questions. And, um, they do work very, the staff works very hard for you, but not only do they work hard for you, they work hard for the taxpayers of Pitt County. And they work with compassion in a very difficult area. So we encourage and work as hard as we can with any taxpayer who is willing to work with us.
Thank you very much, Ms. Booker. Any questions, comments? Okay. Our next item, our items for consent, I'll let them know.
Motion to approve the report.
Oh, that report, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, now, items for consent.
Motion to approve the items for consent. Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, our next item is an item for discussion, Mr. Noel Lee.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Uh, tonight, we come forward, uh, with you, uh, asking that you reject the proposals that we received on our paging, uh, RFPs. On February the 8th, we sent those out. This was the third proposal that had gone out. These were returned by March 12th, uh, 2012. Uh, Federal Engineering took these proposals, looked at them, and the proposals come from Critical Response Systems, US Alert, American Messaging, and Motorola. F E said that these four proposals were not compliant. So we're back again on this third one, and we're asking that you reject this. We do plan to be meeting with the over, uh, Project Committee on April 25th. Federal will be here to give us some options that we can pursue with a paging solution.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
This is, I want to remind the board, the last component to the radio project that we're trying to get into place, and, um, we have been going through trials and tribulations through the RFP, Request for Proposal Process, for the, the paging system, and, um, Federal Engineering, like Noel had said, has recommended that we reject these four proposals because they are non-compliant to the conditions of the RFP, and staff and Federal Engineering are coming up with an alternative to bring back before the board, actually to the radio, the radio project committee first, then back to you as a board for the solution, the ultimate solution of how to put a paging solution into place as part of, the final step in this process.
So we have a solution in the future, but does, these have to be rejected tonight for you to move forward?
We're, we're in the process of developing that solution-
Exactly.
-and strategizing towards it.
Motion to reject. Second.
Okay, any comments? Okay, let's vote.
The only comment, that should have been had on the way back when we did the whole thing, that I said previously.
Yeah, we had spoken about that, I think, last time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Rose, if you'll come forward, please, and I think Mr. Lee is going to be your backup.
Of course he is.
This is in reference to our regional hazard mitigation plan.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. As we typically like to go through these processes, we like to have grant money to follow up on, and in this lean time, we certainly want to take advantage of it. And the state has approached us about funding being unavailable for regional hazard mitigation plan, and just, number one, why is it important that we have the plans in place? Number one is we are eligible for post-disaster funding, and that is crucial, as we found out last year with debris removal after Hurricane Irene came through, and also looking at possible elevation or buyout programs in the future if there is significant flooding. So that being one thing, and again, uh, as we've seen this process go through, this will be our fourth time in revising the county's hazard mitigation plan. The, the scope continues to grow. We started out single county, we added on four municipalities last time, the one that was approved back in 2010. We had nine municipalities here in the county. The state has advised us, funding is only available if we do a regional hazard mitigation plan that will include now with identified five counties. So, uh, we want to make you aware of this tonight and some of the other things that we're recommending. Um, the counties that we're being grouped with, I will tell you, these are counties that we haven't done a lot of planning exercises with previously, but, uh, the state has so grouped us together, and if we're wanting the funding, this is our last resort to go with these counties. These are the last ones standing. So if we opt to go with other communities, we may not be eligible for the funding. Um, our fu, our current plan, which we just approved, got FEMA approval back in July of 2010, expires in July of 2015. As typically, uh, these, uh, plans stay in effect for five years. This is a long grant review process, so we're looking at having these funds available a year from now, summer of next year, and it's going to take about 18 months, we're projecting, to actually, uh, develop the plan. That gets us right up on, knocking on the door of 2015. So, uh, what we're also here to ask tonight is, uh, the board's endorsement for Pitt County to be the lead agency. We feel like we've got the expertise after dealing with some of the plans that we've dealt with in the past. And just as important, our, uh, plan is the first one to expire among these counties that we're grouped with, so we want to ensure that our plan stays in effect, and we want to make sure we meet the deadlines associated with it. We're also looking at bringing some of the funding back in for some of our manpower and some of our resources that would be provided, that specifically with the mapping component. And what we do have to do is some legwork here in Pitt County. If our county is to be included, we have to bring along with us the endorsement of five other municipalities in the county. So we have to get out and talk with them if we move forward in this, uh, as we're recommending tonight. So, Madam Chair, we're, uh, recommending that Pitt County be identified as the lead agency for this regional hazard mitigation plan, and also authorize staff to solicit participation among all the communities here in Pitt County, all 10 municipalities, but we need at least five to move forward.
Some of.
Second.
And we have a question?
And if, in the solicitation, uh, process, James, if we don't get the five, then you would come back to us?
Yes.
But you really don't anticipate that being the problem?
They have, again, last time we had nine municipalities, and I would assume all nine of those were hoping to get the 10- nine of those were hoping to get the 10th one in this time.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Mr. James?
Is there any money that we have to add on to, or is all this, every bit of it going to be given?
Right now, Mr. James, no money, no match money has been identified. Certainly, there's going to be some staff involvement, some resources that we'll be putting into the process, but no cash match.
That's the next thing that I want. I know you said that, hoping that some of these funds could be used for work, office work and things such as that. And how much is that going to cost? Would it cost us to hire additional personnel, or any of that type?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, let's remember that.
We will hire on a consultant to assist with the plan, but we're not going to hire on additional staff.
Will those consultants be paid by Pitt County?
They will be paid through these grant funds. That's the whole intent.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Rhodes, what exactly would this do for Pitt County?
I'll just give you some examples of our past hazard mitigation plans and some of the implementation strategies we had. One very simple one, I'd say, back when we first had our plan adopted in 99, or actually 2000 after Hurricane Floyd, we had in there a provision to help mitigate flood damage here in the county by actually instituting a two-foot freeboard over the base flood elevation. So, now, when structures are being developed in the, or built in the floodplain area, we require that these be elevated an additional two foot above the base flood elevation identified by FEMA. That helps, if we get more than a 100-year flood event, it helps ensure that those homes aren't damaged as severely.
What are some of those things?
Well, also permitting activities, ensuring that we have the proper permitting in place. It deals a lot with our grant, also the buyout program. If one's available, and we've got repetitive loss properties out in the county, we try to ensure we bring those properties in so FEMA doesn't continually have to provide funding for repairs or whatever for those properties. It's better to remove those folks out of harm's way. So, there's several different ideas that we've had in the past, and we've been fairly successful in implementing those plans in the past.
Does this have anything to do with fuel tanks that are leaking?
No, that's a different program. It also deals with debris removal, we dealt with debris from Hurricane Irene. We actually developed an annex to the hazard mitigation plan, and to some extent, because we had just updated and amended the current plan, when Hurricane Irene came through, we were dealing with FEMA, we were able to use the amendments to our plan to kind of defend ourselves as we were seeking reimbursement, reimbursements for certain activities they were trying to exclude, and the state actually approved our plan, so we just kind of threw it back to them to say, you should reimburse us because.
Okay.
This is what we did in the past, right? Did we not have a grant when we did this?
Yes, this last time, we got one of the few that were available.
And if this doesn't happen, and we don't get in with this group, then this still has to be done in 2015. So, without the grant, that, with the grant, it takes some pressure off of you and your budget and your office.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't think that, okay, I'll call for the vote, unless someone has something else to say.
Can I have a motion?
Yes, we add the motion. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is our appointments, and the first one is an appointment to the Development Commission, and I think we have a letter.
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Elliott?
We had recently appointed Phil Flowers, who is in our database, to be eligible to be appointed to the Development Commission. He has declined due to already being on several different boards and activities, and is already serving the county in many ways. And the Community College is recommending that Dr. Pamela Hilbert be appointed to this position on the Pitt County Industrial Development Commission.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Dr. Pamela Hilbert.
Okay, she actually works for Pitt Community College, but the Development Commission is making the recommendation. Okay, any other nominations? Let's vote then. Mr. McGlonghorn? Thank you. And our next is a reappointment to the Pitt County Board of Health, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, the Pitt County Board of Health, you have three people. I'm going to have difficulty pronouncing this first person's name, somebody could help me. Jevanetico Peralta's, that's probably slaughtered that, but term will expire in this month, in April. Lady Acocks' term will expire May of this year, and Dr. Morrow is recommending that Mr. Peralta and Dr. Acock be reappointed for a three-year term each. Robert Ogden's term expires next month in May, and he does not wish to be reappointed. We'll be advertising and recruiting for that position.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that we appoint the two as recommended.
Okay.
Second.
All right, let's vote if there are no other nominations. Okay.
If I may clarify, Madam Chairman, the need to advertise is that Mr. Ogden's position is designated by the state as being a pharmacist position. And so, we need to fill that position with a, either an active or a former pharmacist.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Okay, our next item, our Commissioners' comments, Mr. Owens?
No, ma'am.
Mr. James? Mr. McGlonghorn?
Yes, ma'am. It has been brought to my attention by several Commissioners, of course Commissioner Webb, who was out, Commissioner Hammer, Commissioner James, and myself, we talked about having the cars, county vehicles, option off locally, and we were thinking in terms of, to reason, basically. It would keep the money flow in Pitt County, and it also would enable more jobs to be obtained here in Pitt County by having these vehicles option off. Now, I understand that right now, the vehicles are being optioned through a federal means or website, and I think the city of Greenville is considering, they may have considered to do it locally. So, I would certainly like to ask the county attorney, my manager, to look into this very seriously because we need jobs to be, more jobs in Pitt County, and if it's going to provide that, that's certainly good, and it's going to provide money to be here in Pitt County to help the economy. I certainly would be for that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure they'll look into that. Mr. Smith?
No comment.
That's John Nocon. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All right, let's all vote. Mr. James? There you go. Thank you. Good job, guys.